Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Welcome, everyone at home. This is the Bangor School Committee Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, December 14th. It is right at 7:00 PM. And please join me for the pledge. Thank you. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Okay. And public comments? Okay, any public comments tonight? We're online. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to superintendent's proposals and updates. No action items, but we have one informational item, and it is the report on the pilot for Wabanaki Studies. Superintendent Tager?
Yes, Bangor High School Principal Paul Butler and World Language Department Head Mary Sue Schilling will share with the committee the pilot plans for Wabanaki Studies. So one of the productive parts of the Good and Weak is I spend time one with every department head. And that's really valuable. And by the time that most of the curriculum things are upcoming, but I guess it was a few years ago now when we started talking about linguistics. And we had some candidates come through who had some background or some specific training in linguistics. And so it's always been fatted around as an idea. And so it was last year, actually, as long as we have it, last year, we were in one of those meetings, Mary Sue and I, Chair of the World Languages Department. And she was, she's always excited to come in and talk, but she was really excited because she annexed a community member, which happens a little bit. Who, she said, John had the best idea, so I want to talk about it. So, yeah, so she, do you want to just give us a little bit of context for that?
Well, I just want to say that the idea was truly just born of the question, why don't we offer a Wabanaki language in our World Languages Department? And my answer was just very simple. It was, I don't know, but let's try. And so from that conversation a year ago, truly in January, a year ago, we've been able to move forward, sometimes very slowly. But finally, we're going to have this ready to roll out in the very end of January of 2023. So, thank you.
So we got a pilot. So then we've had this desire to broaden languages. We've had an interest in linguistics through the creative nudge of a community member. And this came, this idea of we're in such a rich area for native languages that we decided it was time to push ahead a little bit. So we had a opportunity. We brought in Jeff Wingard, who is the Chair of the History Department. And he worked the network. We were able to have four or five conversations that we thought were going to be really fruitful right away. There are folks who are in the region who actually do instruct Wabanaki language, most of the younger students. But then through those conversations, there came a step toward a program at MIT. And then after that, somebody in particular that we were just put in touch with. And so we lucked out and we found this person, John Dennis, and found his number. And we, he was ready for a phone conversation. Somebody else pointed to us, like, there's a phone call. Hey, there's a story on WGME from Prescott or Channel 8 recently. So we got that. So anyway, we called John, and it was this great conversation. He's really, you know, you'll see in the, the video is a very, just genuine person. We started the conversation. His background is that he was born of Scotia, lives in Prescott. He himself, he himself found his way to MIT language because he wanted to preserve his language and his culture and his traditions. He was proceeding through the MIT Indigenous Languages Initiative, and he was game. So we, I thought I would show you the video out. If I can. Help my navigation. You're gonna have to endure a Purdue University ad. I couldn't find a way to, oil makers are good, though.
A member of the Aristic Band of Micmacs has been accepted in a master's program in linguistics at MIT. Kathy McCarty has more on his plans to keep his native language alive.
John Dennis, a member of the Aristic Band of Micmacs, is the latest person to be admitted into the Midley MIT Indigenous Language Initiative, a master's program offered through MIT's Department of Linguistics and Philosophy. His goal is to learn skills to be able to teach his native language to others.
Yeah, I've been interested in it only because I've been studying language for a while. I grew up with it. And I was just very intrigued into, not only does it correlate with the culture, it correlates with the history and so on.
Norvin Richards, professor of linguistics, says the goal of the program is to provide students with the skills to teach others about their language in an orderly way.
Fair number of the people in this program, the Midley Program, come in, I think, wanting to do what John, I think, is interested in, which is teaching their own language. And so we'll do, we'll do work that's sort of geared toward helping him get better at that.
Richards stressed the importance of keeping languages alive, especially the lesser-known indigenous ones.
There's all this cultural wealth that's in danger of just being irrevocably lost if something isn't done. And it's thanks to people like John that that's going to be stopped. If it's stopped, people like John are going to be crucial.
Dennis plans to use what he learns to continue teaching Micmac youth their native language.
I'm putting the language back in their mouth because when, you know, their grandparents or their elders now, their grandparents, great-grandparents, it had, the language was taken from them. So now I feel, I tell them, I'm putting the language back, giving it back to you because that's where it truly belongs, is in, is in your mouth. It belongs to you.
Dennis says he looks forward to starting the two-year MIT program this fall, which will teach him skills to keep the Micmac language alive. Kathy McCarty, News Source 8.
And it should be said, too, that that's an older video, that he has completed that program.
Yeah, so I think it comes through, not even as, as well as, his authenticity isn't coming even through in that video as well as it does in, in context with John. So we annexed a existing practice, in terms of building pathways to languages. We had a really, a lot of success in doing a semester of exposure to language, culture, and history to build Chinese numbers. It just so happened that we had an open semester for coming up, and John was interested. Mary Sue was persistent, and we, we able to use a pathway for hiring people as contractors. So basically, the plan is as described here. It's a second semester course, it's a pilot. That'll be for elective credit. It's Lily Crane, who teaches Chinese, has that semester. She has a core group of students who, we would have found other courses for them to take, but we'll keep in that course. Lily will be live every day. John will be by Zoom. And he will begin to, be having an opportunity to instruct the linguistics elements while Lily's live and focus on culture, language, and history. And that we will, as always, have our, our hearts and minds and thinking caps on a potential expansion. But we're really excited about it and would credit Mary Sue and Jeff Wingard for so much of the legwork and not even being married to somebody with a good idea. But all the things fell in place. So we're excited about it. We think it's, in terms of desired outcomes, as always, an enriching experience for our kids. We want professional collaboration, the ability to learn a little bit differently, flex our muscles a little bit on bringing the language aboard, one that feels like an expansion to the program, even though it's a pilot. We like the idea of being able to assist John with his learning and to be partnered with the program like is occurring at MIT. And of course, the Micmac language preservation is, is important. And that's, that's the ultimate goal, keeping language alive and giving opportunity to enrich ourselves and students and to enrich somebody who's on a, on a pathway to a pretty remarkable part of their life, and John, so.
Thank you. That's wonderful. I'm really excited about this. Just a quick question, in terms of like credit, will that would just work like regular?
Yeah, it'll be, it won't be language credit, but we'll do an elective credit, probably a history or cultural competency credit, something along those lines.
Because it's a semester, it's a half-credit.
Okay.
Definitely an elective.
Okay, okay. Member Luciano.
First of all, this is amazing. I'm so excited to see this. But is there a chance we could maybe have a couple of the students come and visit us maybe towards the end of the year?
Sure, we'll build courage right in the curriculum.
This is, I feel like this is just such a unique opportunity, and I would love to see how it's going to impact kids in real time.
Member Sprague.
Thank you, Madam Trigg. I was just going to suggest the same thing. It'd be great to get a follow-up at the end of the semester. And while not specifically relevant to this program, I just wanted to acknowledge that at the younger grade levels, I've seen a lot of materials coming home, especially in November, which was Native American Heritage Month, language materials. They had guest speakers in their classes. And it was really enriching for them in a way that I don't remember getting that when I was a kid growing up in school. And it was, it seemed to be quite positive. So I think this is a great effort. Good luck. Look forward to seeing how it goes.
All right, thank you. Okay. Moving on to business action items, we have action items. We have minutes for our regular meeting of November 30th, 2022.
Yes, I'm recommending approval of the draft minutes of the November 30, 2022 Regular School Committee Meeting.
Can I get a motion, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Motion passes six-zero, thank you.
Next, we have certification of employment of the superintendent of schools.
Title 20 AMRSA, Section 10512, requires the school committee certify employment of a superintendent each December for the following school year. All main school units are required by law to have a superintendent. The Bangor School Committee must vote to authorize the chair to complete the certification of employment form for the next school year, 2023, 2024.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion passes six-zero.
Next, we have financial report, and we have the September financial report.
Yes, I'm recommending approval of the September 2022 financial report.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or discussion? No, all in favor?
Motion passes six-zero, thank you.
Next, we have personnel, and we have extra duty assignments.
I'm recommending committee approval of the following extra duty assignments for the school year 2022, 2023. Clayton Perry, Dramatics, Technical Advisor, Bangor High School. Michael Fagon, Girls Lacrosse Coach, Bangor High School.
Motion, please.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion or questions? No, all in favor?
Motion passes six-zero, thank you.
Next, we have second reading of a policy, and we have revised policy GDB seven, Support Staff Compensation Guide.
I'm recommending second reading of revised policy, revised policy GDB seven, Support Staff Compensation Guide.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Motion passes six-zero.
And next, we have donations. And Member Mendel, it's your turn.
To 14th Street School from Hannaford, a cash donation to support students having a total dollar value of $360. To William S. Cohen School from Marlene and Frank Susie, a cash donation to support students during the holidays, having a total dollar value of $250. To James F. Dowdy School from CNL Aviation, 20 Thanksgiving baskets for students having a total dollar value of $2,500. To Bangor High School from Bangor Rotary Charities, a cash donation for participation in the parade, having a total dollar value of $1,000.
Okay, motion, please.
So moved. Second.
Any, any questions or discussion? No, all in favor?
Motion passes six-zero, thank you.
Many thanks. And I guess we have our committee updates. But first, any comments or questions from the committee? Yes, Member Saret.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'll let Superintendent Tager expand on these. I think he's more knowledgeable than I am on them. But we had a, an opportunity, Superintendent Tager and I, to sit down with Senator Baldacci, who wanted to chat with us, or chat with Superintendent Tager and I, a little bit about legislative priorities for the Bangor School Department in the upcoming session. And we had a good discussion. And one of the things that I was really excited to hear him suggest, and I wanted to bring this to the committee, he suggested that at some point soon, we sit down again with him and with the other representatives from Bangor and have that discussion again as a whole group. So I thought that was a great suggestion, but I wanted to share that with you. And Superintendent Tager, did you want to discuss any of the things that we, the specifics we talked about with Senator Baldacci?
Sure, sure, thank you. Exactly what Member Saret or Vice Chair Saret mentioned. Senator Joe Baldacci came and spoke with us. It was a really positive conversation. And the suggestion is that he comes and we invite all the local legislators to come to a public meeting. So something we maybe could discuss at our retreat. But I think it might be something for you all to consider. He did ask for some things that, that were important, and he asked me to send him some talking points. So the three things that I talked about, just so you're all aware of it, is the 55% contribution that we receive from the state. We asked that they maintain or increase that. So I'm going to send him some talking points. Assistant Superintendent Eric Smedberg's going to help me with some of those talking points, but that was a topic that he was into. And we thanked him for that happening during his tenure. And I think he was very much on board with maintaining or increasing. We also talked about the ratio. And that has to do with class size, where they want to go back to ratios they used pre-COVID. I disagree with that, and we're going to send some talking points on that, too, because I think COVID is still something we're experiencing with our students as far as our learning loss that they may have had over the last couple of years. The third topic I talked to him about with Vice Chair Saret was the Maine diploma. As you know, our graduation rate went to close to 90%. It was 89.6 or 8, is that correct? And we would have been just at 87 without the Maine diploma. So I told him some stories, which I thought was helpful, and asked him if he wanted to maybe come visit the school. But after talking to some of our students this year, just so you're aware of it, one of the students I talked to, without naming names, was out of school for two years, painting to help raise money for the family. I said, what kind of painting? And it was house painting inside and outside. Has come back and is actually signed up to attend community college. And so he's one of the stories. Another student that I spoke to in his classroom mentioned that he had three siblings. One had graduated from Bangor High. The other two didn't graduate high school, and he wants to be the first to go to college. So I think for them to hear these stories, but my point is, I think you have to look at four years for that Maine diploma. And it, we increased by about 2% because of that, as you're all aware, which got us from 87 to 89, close to 90. And we'll have that choice for students this year. We have about 17 students that are on that track right now. But my point was, if you look at the personal stories, these are students that would not have come back to school if our social workers wouldn't have gone to the house to go get them. And then we have a grad coach that is very, two grad coaches, the one that works with seniors specifically is very much a motivator, as is the other one, too. But I think we, these are students that would not have made it with either diploma if we didn't go after them. So I'm asking him to look at that, too. He seemed very interested in all three things. But I think if we have a public meeting, you may have some other priorities besides what I mentioned, but those are the three that I mentioned. You might want to mention the other one, too.
Yes, I will. And thank you. There was a fourth topic that, that I brought up and had some good conversation around it. And it's a topic that impacts Bangor, but it also impacts K-12 education across the state. And it's, it's really around inequities around funding distribution to school systems. And he was, it was a good conversation. And I think he and other representatives would like to have more discussion about it. So I was happy to hear that.
And thank you to Vice Chair Saret for facilitating that meeting. I know I couldn't be there, but I knew it was in good hands. So thank you for doing that. And there, I think, in terms of like the refugee resettlement, I know that several of the, I know Senator Baldacci and several of the other legislators are getting together. And I think we could possibly, you know, get some help in that regard as well. So I think it's a good idea to like continue adding on to our list. Any questions from the committee? Okay, or from the student? Okay. Any other comments or questions in general? Okay, so we will move on to committee reports, representatives' reports. Member Luciano.
The spruce board met last week, and we appointed a new chair, interim chair. I'll be honest, I'm not really sure, but it's Christie, so surprise. So she was appointed for, I believe, the rest of the year, the school year? Thank you, sorry. I didn't see any minutes yet, apologize. But, um, so that was, that was announced, and that was it. We had a training, good training.
Excellent. Thank you. Member Saret, do you want to share a little bit about the DEI Committee?
I will, but promise me you'll fill in anything.
I promise.
Yes, so we did have our first DEIB Advisory Committee meeting. It was wonderful. I was just in awe of all the talent and expertise in this committee. So kudos to all the folks that have developed, developed this committee last year. You, you found the best of the best. So I was, I was, that was wonderful. Couple of the things that were discussed as initiatives for this year, and I just, I just have a few bullets. Recruitment of a more diverse pool of candidates for a variety of positions in the Bangor School Department, implementing DEIB professional development opportunities for educators across the system. And there was quite a bit of discussion, and I feel like Chair Hassanin has more context and knowledge on this than I do, and maybe she can fill in some gaps here. There was quite a bit of discussion around communication strategies for the Bangor School Department when a significant act of hate or violence is perpetrated on a marginalized community, either locally, at a state level or nationally. I thought that was an important conversation, too. And I feel like you've been working on this for a while, and.
Yeah, and you know, I think the students, correct me if I'm mistaken, Superintendent Tager, but the students and the civil rights team have really worked on a wonderful statement. And we will push that out to the rest of the advisory board and just get more input.
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. So more to come on that. And we would like to get it approved by the school committee first and then even put it on our website afterwards. But I think we need to stay ahead of all of these horrible things that are happening in our community and not be reactive, but stay on top of it and just, you know, really declare our stance against any type of hate and violence. So, thank you. That was very thorough. I appreciate it. And Member Jondro.
Thank you very much. We had a meeting with UTC last week. Member Saret, Sorg, and I enjoyed a meeting with the board. We heard a little bit about the work that they're doing to review and revise policies currently. One of their biggest hurdles is always going to be space. Their programs are growing, and they're phenomenal. And the student body is really delightful. So I know that they're working on some grant programs to hopefully be able to expand the space that they have. We learned about some new equipment they have. The students are quite excited about their new Skid steer. I think that's the right word for it. But the, the best part of our evening, we, I think Member Saret will agree, was the wonderful dinner that we were treated to, a five-course meal, by the student chefs there at the program. And we had the opportunity to meet their community members and sit with the students and learn about their programs. I had to give them a little, a little jab. They made us custom key tags with our last names on there. And I asked why they didn't possibly put my entire name on there. They thought it just wasn't going to work. I thought maybe next time we could give it a go, see how small they can laser cut that. But it was really a delight to meet the students and to see how much they're thriving in this program. It's a gem here in the Bangor community. So it was a great opportunity. I also had a full tour this morning and got the go-ahead to shadow a student coming up so that I can see what it's like from the student's perspective to be there, which I'm really looking forward to.
Excellent. And Member Saret.
Yeah, I just, I'd be remiss if I didn't also mention how incredible the dinner was and how talented those students are. It's high restaurant quality food, and it was just superb. I also want to mention how wonderful it was to sit with the student. She's a student from Herman High School, pursuing the law enforcement. And just the, you know, the confidence she had. I mean, I'm awkward when I sit down with strangers anytime. And she was just comfortable and made us feel comfortable and just really impressive person, student. And it's a, it's a great program.
I'll just jump in. I think she was the only student at a table with three adults she had no prior experience with. So she really held her own. It was great.
Thank you. And Member Mendel.
Yeah, the, the policy meeting, Policy Committee met on Monday, I believe, Monday. And we spent the entire time going over the concussion policy, which will be coming before the committee in January at some point, or hopefully, yeah, early next year sometime.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other committee updates, representatives' reports, before we move on to student committee member updates? Member Saret?
Good evening. So it's a busy time of year, of course. Students are starting to hear back for early decision to colleges. Community colleges have come to the high school to meet with students and do interviews. And, you know, there's just a lot going on as we're heading towards winter break. Winter sports are really getting into a full season. There's many games you can see, and you can find all the schedules on the Bangor School Department website. Project Transition students have been hosting a fundraiser for the Bangor Humane Society. They're getting donated items from other students, and they're really pushing forward for that. So it's nice they're doing that for the community. On Pearl Harbor Day last Wednesday, I think JROTC attended a event to memorialize the day. The band was not able to attend because it was raining, but JROTC was there. And just a brief update about the Peru trip. So because of recent events, there's been major political unrest in Peru, and the US State Department has strongly advised not to have non-essential travel there. So our Humanities Academy has decided not to go to Peru, but EF Tours has worked with us to pick a different destination. And the students decided on Portugal and Spain. So the experience will be very different, but the students are still able to travel internationally this year. So that's what's going on with that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
And Member Dusablan, do you want to add anything?
Thank you. I do have a question for, I think this would be for Principal Butler. In terms of the, the canceled trip, and if students choose not to go to Portugal and Spain, is there like a refund of the money, or how does that work?
We have a strong liaison. That was one of the first layers of conversation. Because it's.
it is a business transaction from where they sit. But they've given every surety that, you know, whether it be increased cost, if that tends, they've given all the things that you would cover them in term, from a business transactional standpoint. And one of those was if it turns out that, it sort of reopens a window, I guess, for flexibility when, if people can't travel. So refunds have been part of the conversation. You know, cost sharing to some degree. They're going to do everything they can to keep the trip a successful one for the reasons, the larger reasons that people travel. But they've been very good. It's a very professional organization.
Excellent. Member John Dro.
I know they're changing location. Does this change the date range of their trip? Or is it just the final destination?
I don't believe so, no. No, I don't. I think some of that stuff will settle out. I think they're probably pretty fresh on interfacing and planning a new trip. I guess it could be a day or so. But I think that type of thing is fairly, fairly solidly set as a travel window.
Yeah, I know a lot of people are disappointed that they couldn't do the Peru trip. That's what it is. Thank you. Any other final questions? Okay, so we have some informational items. We have important dates coming up. Friday, December 23, 2022 is Bangor Day. Wednesday, January 11, 2023 is a regular meeting, 7:00 PM Council Chambers. I don't know if we can go ahead and talk about the retreat, or do you want to just?
You could announce the date. Yeah, sure.
So we have a consensus, and we will have our first retreat half-day, January 23, 8:30 to 12:30 at Camp, Camp Jordan. So we're excited about that. That'll be the first of two that we plan to have. Wednesday, January 25, 2023, regular meeting, 7:00 PM Council Chambers. Wednesday, February 1, 2023, regular meeting, 7:00 PM here in Council Chambers. And then Wednesday, February 15, 2023, regular meeting, 7:00 PM Council Chambers. Final call for questions or comments. Member Saret.
Just, just wanted to know, will there be any ice fishing opportunities at the retreat this year?
We will try. We, you know, I have to express my sincere gratitude to Diane Dickerson and the why, because this is the second time that we've asked, and she has been very generous, very hospitable, and they are welcoming us again at Camp Jordan. She did say that the fireplace will be on, and it'll be cozy. So it'll be really nice. I look forward to it. And with that, can I get a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
That's a six zero. Thank you.